Cord. Okay, it is seven oh four P M. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, and we are having a Zoom meeting.
Maybe one of our last, unfortunately.
I will start with a call to order. Susan Sinnet is muted.
Here.
Thank you. Tom McGinn.
Yeah.
Paul Green.
Here.
Marty Kane.
Yay.
Susan Roth.
Here.
I am Rich Genong, the Planning Board Chair, and we are waiting on Jamie Lowery, who has had a couple of invitations sent to him, I guess.
I sent him one, too.
Yep, and I, somebody else sent him one, and I tried to send him one, but.
And while sending stuff, Susan, I sent you a copy of L D thirty-two in a draft form from our office so that you can see the the language for that. I just sent it to you, so you should get it.
Okay, so on today, tonight, we have the approval of the agenda. We have approval of the minutes of July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. You have public comment. We have a new application, a conditional use permit amendment. Want to amend the conditional use permit for the addition of a fourteen thousand four hundred square foot indoor riding arena. We're going to be looking at land use ordinance amendments, discussion with action on land use ordinance nine point three point twelve cluster housing planned unit developments. We will then have other business, the town planners reports. There's a meeting by M M A on September thirteenth. We need to let Ann know who's going, and then we will have discussion regarding the format of board minutes. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion was made by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, Susan Sinnet?
Yes.
Marty?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Tom McGinn?
Hi.
Susan Roth?
Hi.
And Jamie is here. We just moved to to approve the minutes, Jamie. So I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna count you as an abstention at this point, and we'll just proceed forward and say that it was six in favor and one abstention. And we'd now like to welcome Jamie to to come in once his audio gets up and running. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for July sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Let me ask our illustrious town planner, because I thought we had decided that making a reference to the video would be sufficient, so we no longer have to approve those minutes, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
You can just acknowledge that they've been, you know, posted or what have you, but there's no need to approve.
The the video recording from the last meeting has been posted. We will then proceed on to public comment. And since there's nobody from the public here other than the applicant, I don't think we can have any public comment. So we will go directly to the applicant. This is a conditional use permit amendment to amend the conditional use permit to include the addition of a fourteen thousand four hundred square foot indoor riding arena. Amanda Butted is the owner applicant, Tom Cludier is the applicant's agent, and Jason Baffietis of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the project engineer. And I don't see Jason here.
No, Jason just texted me and said he didn't have great Wi-Fi where he was, and it was having trouble loading and getting into the meeting. But said I could call him, but I don't know that we'll we'll need him if you guys have any specific questions. I can get ahold of them and get you some answers, but I think I have.
Well, look. I'll I'll let everybody else go first and see if they have any any questions.
Well, I don't know if if we got a set of plans for it, I I didn't see anything like where the where the building will be located and things like that setbacks.
So that that should all be, I mean, part of that, you should have an electronic version of the.
The application, Tom. There is, there is, it attached to the application down at the bottom.
Oh, is that the bottom? Okay, off you scroll through.
So on page eight is is basically the site plan that was approved in two thousand eighteen at the time that had a note of a future arena location, which we, I think the planning board, when we did the sidewalk in two thousand eighteen, we kind of stood right there, and I explained that, you know, eventually we wanted to build a building there. At the time, it wasn't in our immediate plan, so that wasn't something that we seeked approval for. But there is, you know, it is marked on that site plan where it would be located, it's attached to the existing structure. And I didn't include the whole plans, because quite honestly, I didn't want to pay for engineered prints before I got approval to build a building. But I did have the elevation drawings included in that site plan in a rendering at the page eleven and twelve.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. When I'm looking at the plan, this is the, I can't show you this screen. I probably can, but I don't know how. But I don't know how.
That's all right.
It appears that you're going to be facing the driveway with the the new addition? Or is that going to be on the backside of the current plan?
No, so it'll run along parallel to the existing parking lot or driveway, yes. Yeah, so you're probably referring to that last page twelve, the rendering there.
No, no, I was actually looking up above the 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 page right after the checklist, where you had some way.
The site plan, yep. Yeah, so currently, I mean, we we did all the site work based on this happening eventually. We didn't have the means to do it in two thousand fourteen, when we originally built this property. We worked for quite a while, as I think most of you might remember, to get an amendment actually done to include anything regarding equestrian facilities. So the, you know, the the material we need to bring in is not like, we're not really moving earth, it's just it's fill material, so we had already basically dug the foundation of what would be a future arena. So, you know, that arena is, it's literally four walls and a roof, there's no storage above, there's no, you know, of course, no living space, there's no plumbing, there's no heating. It's it's a four walls and a roof and a sand base. So the the material I need to bring in there is just literally the to fill the inside of the foundation and and put that sand base. And I do, I do know, I I put on the original application, the the maximum size of what that building would be. It actually, you know, and I think that was just over fourteen thousand square foot. It likely, if we do get approval, which I I sure hope we do, and we do go ahead and apply for a building permit, it'll likely be a bit smaller than that. But I wanted to be, you know, conservative and say, you know, this is the largest building we'd ever put there and at least get the approval to move forward and actually, you know, get the engineering done for the building, price it out, and be able to apply for that building permit.
Rich?
Yes, Paul.
I looked through it, and I was around a twenty eighteen, but obviously it got approved and everything was built. The only question I had was when I was looking through your application, on here, you're asking to waive notifying the the your neighbors, right? The mailing addresses and all that. I'm not sure why. Why wouldn't you notify them of that?
I'm I'm happy to, again, so like I, there's nothing changing about the the use of the property, besides the fact that we'd just be adding on that addition. We did, we, most of these things that I requested waivers for, or or I elected do not apply, were done in two thousand eighteen. So we are in very good standing with all of our neighbors, and I'd be happy to do that if that's a recommendation of the board today. But that would be my only explanation.
That that was one of my questions.
Now, I I if I was your neighbor and you were doing it, I'd probably be curious.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, like I said, we we did it in twenty fourteen when we started construction, we did it in two thousand eighteen when we got the permit. None of our neighbors can actually even see the property. Yeah. But I'd be happy to do that if that was necessary.
Well, I think that's just a matter of giving the labels to Ann up at Town Hall, and the Town Hall would send them all out.
Okay.
That is, that is generally a requirement anytime you go for a permit or an amendment of any kind. I got notified on something my next door neighbor was doing, and he he wasn't even trying to make an amendment or anything, he wanted to put a a dormer on his house, and they had to send me notice that they were doing that, which.
Seems a little excessive, but I can print up some labels, that's that's the no problem.
And also Susan's in here twice now. And now she's back to only one, okay.
So so Rich, what kind of notice are we required as a town to provide to the neighbors? Is it in advance of tonight's meeting, is it in in advance of a public hearing? What, I mean, I sort of, I I know where Paul's coming from, and if we've got to provide notice, then the applicant needs to get a, get the labels for us, but if we're not notifying anybody of anything, then sort of a moot point.
Well, it is, it is an item that is in the application. We notify all of the abutters anytime there's there's an a change to a permit that was granted, in this case, the equestrian stables. He's requesting a change to the plan, so we need to let the neighbors know that he's looking for a change in the plan. And it's it's, I'll I'll acknowledge it's kind of bizarre, because your neighbors could be your parents and your brothers. The ordinance doesn't look at that, it says the abutters have to be notified.
I will just add, I looked at my, just pulled up my application from two thousand eighteen, I did, I guess, informally, personally notify them, but you, the Planning Board, sorry, waived that in two thousand eighteen, again, because we didn't, the property was already here. So you were approving, you know, what was already, what was already complete, and the neighbors were well aware of that. They did receive notice in two thousand fourteen when we originally got a building permit to build it. But the 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 notice, I think the justification for waiving it in two thousand eighteen was nothing was changing. Right, we had been here for four or five years, nothing.
And and you were, I think the only thing that really changed was you went to the equestrian stable aspect of it, which was a slightly higher use than than previous.
Well, there was no previous use.
There may have been a previous use, it just wasn't notified by anybody.
Right.
The board, just as a, as a thing, just to notify neighbors, not all neighbors stay the same, not all neighbors happen the same, it should be put out, just so that people are there, they get the information.
I agree with Susan, it's so easy to do it. Hold on one second. Harley, Cricket, where are you? Are you okay?
I I have no other comments, Rich.
Okay. I I had that one about the about the labels. If I can figure out how to, okay, she's back, okay. I had that question about the labels. I had one on on the very last page. You're looking for letters of compliance from the Public Works Director. I can see waiving that, because you haven't done any roadwork or
Yep.
I can see waiving the contract deputy, because I don't think the deputy even, he might know you're out there, but I don't know if he's ever had reason to go out there. But from the Arundel Fire Chief, I think you need a letter from the Fire Chief. You're adding a new structure onto the property. The Fire Department needs to know about it. And he's gonna, he may not require you to do anything, or he may require you to do something. So that's one of those things that, from the Fire Chief's point of view, I think he needs to be notified about it, and then just give you a letter saying that he has looked at it and he's happy.
Yep.
I'm not sure. I don't think there was anything else that I was, that I actually saw. I have no problem waiving the topographic survey. Because again, this is, this is simply a modification to the original plan. I don't know, anybody else have comments or questions?
Well, I know you, Rich, when you and I discussed it, that you thought a sidewalk was necessary. And I looked at the original plans, which I have in my garage, believe it or not, and what we received from Lee J. And I personally don't think we need another sidewalk, but I do think Paul and Susan should see it. Because like the seasonal cottages, it is really something else as a facility and a credit to the community, and I think I said that in two thousand and eighteen.
And as a- a- as I said when we were talking earlier, and everybody else on the board will attest to, I believe in sidewalks. From almost anything. But that's a this, that's a decision that will will be left up to the to the board itself. I I am a big fan of doing sidewalks, because you you never know what has changed from from when the original plans were put into place.
I can attest that it's nothing, and I appreciate your word, Susan, but I would, hey, whether it's formal, informal, I welcome any one of you anytime, but absolutely nothing has changed since, since most of you came out here in two thousand eighteen.
Yes. For me, so I apologize, because I didn't look at the application, I I didn't find it till now, but it seems like this not, or I should ask, either, what changes out there since the last one is since twenty nothing, or or say, just a time delay, you're just ready to to build now?
There's literally nothing, the only reason I didn't, it, you know, the the site plan originally said future arena, right? That was always part of our plans in two thousand eighteen. I didn't think there's like a two, two year, as far as I understand, the ordinance and everything, there's a two year timeframe that you have. And I didn't expect that that was something we were gonna do at the time in the in that two year timeframe, so I expected at the time that we we were ready to expand that facility, expand the facility and do this. It would be outbound of that two years, so we'd have to go through the same process again, so, you know, I n- nothing, nothing about the facility or the property has changed at all since since that day.
It it I I'll agree with Susan about how impressive your your property is, and I'll also add that you had done, you you seem so well prepared, everything.
I don't like wasting anybody's time, that's for sure, so I'm, I'll welcome the sidewalk again to to any of you, whether it's necessary or not, but I'll leave that up to you guys.
I'll I'll leave it up to the rest of the board. Because.
I could take you on a virtual sidewalk right now, Zoom walk.
Hey, Rich, that's something we've never done before, is Zoom sidewalk.
And everything else virtually. If if we were all the same members, you have two new ones, I would say let's skip, because we've all been there, and and I remember coming out of that, everybody agreed it was the best looking application that that we had seen ever, it was very impressive. However, I agree with Rich that if if there wasn't for that two year timeline, I think we'd probably just just let it go if it was only a year afterwards. But with with two years that has gone by, might be worth just to a sidewalk, even if virtual, I'd be all right with that.
I'll bring you out there right now.
Well, I'm fine with that, and there's, Rich was there, I was there, Marty, you were there, Tom. Jamie, did you go?
I don't believe I did.
Okay, so but there are four of us that did go.
Perhaps Jens at the time of.
Oh, Jens did go.
Yes.
Yeah.
But also, too, that was the time when we were telling them how it looked, it looked like Churchill Downs for one. And the second thing was that we were, he showed us all around the the different places for the horses and for the corrals, little corrals, porta houses.
There you are. Here's the site.
How's your band of chickens?
Oh, geez, there's new chickens every time I get home from work, it seems.
Are you glad you don't have rabbits?
I mean, I'm yeah. You'd I you'd you'd walk right out of, you know, this is the main entrance that we all, or most of you walked into. The idea is these, you know, these sliding doors would open up right into that site, so it's, you can see that the site is, you know, it was already prepped for it in two thousand fourteen, right now, we just, it's a field. But it would just be bringing the rest of this up to grade with the the sand footing that, you know, we would, the riding surface, really.
So you're not gonna have any kind of breezeway or anything like that to protect your horses from going from one environment into the other, or protecting the elements?
No, well, there's, it's attached.
Oh, so you go right from the stalls into the arena?
Well, not right from the stalls, but yes, right into this transition, so you'll walk through these doors into into the arena. Yeah, I mean, long, long term, the only thing we'd add is like an extra little area up front, so that you could tack them up and get them ready, but you know, we we showed most of you, we have an area for that already, and there's no reason why we need to do that, like literally, it's just gonna be four walls and a roof. And whatever we can afford to do in the future, you know, maybe we'll we'll add a breezeway someday.
You may have to get a permit for that.
Yeah.
Either that or
Maybe I will.
Future breezeway.
Yeah, I have to build it within two years, though.
Um, what's your, what's your expectation of holding large events?
Literally, nothing would change that we aren't already doing or approved to be doing.
Okay.
We we don't have, I mean, we have, you know, we we would never do, you know, multi-day events or anything like that, that's some other big equestrian parks do, that's not something we want to do. We live here, as I think most of you who were part of that two thousand eighteen group know, this is our home, so like, we don't, she wants to make a living doing what she loves to do, right? And there's a lot of people in the town that that do this, to my knowledge, we're the only people who went through the process of getting the permit to do this, but it's because we have so much invested into it. So literally, nothing would change about the size or the the number of events we would be doing. At least not in our immediate plan.
Right.
So what's the consensus, guys?
What do you guys, somebody make a motion?
Ultimately, I I don't personally see the need to do a sidewalk for what they're looking to do.
I agree.
Me, too.
So I moved that we
We had a viral sidewalk.
Right, I moved that we declined the invitation for another sidewalk.
Okay. So the two things that you really have that you need to address on here is giving it, giving him and giving us direction as to are we notifying abutters? Yes. For a public hearing for the next meeting, or or whenever that date may come, probably the next meeting, I would hope. And you also have to waive the topo issue, the letter to D P W or from D P W, and the waiver from the contract deputy. You ought to make motions and approvals if you agree or disagree on any of that, so the waivers are addressed.
Correct, yeah.
Do it, some that I I would agree to waive, others, I'm not sure, but on the the topographic, I think that should be waived, it's it's about as flat as you can get for such a large area.
Wait, wait, so did we, did we officially decline his invitation to go for a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We never voted on it.
But we never voted on it, I made the motion.
We don't, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. We don't need to vote not to have the sidewalk, we need to vote if we're going to have the sidewalk.
We did have it.
Since we're not gonna have a sidewalk, we don't need to have a vote on it.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
That's quite okay.
But the the motion was made and seconded, so that's hanging out there. We just.
Just withdraw it.
Whoever made the motion, come and draw it.
Withdraw my second.
Okay.
Marty, Marty, you had a question?
Yes. Is the bio considered as, are we considering that a entertainment of a sidewalk? Video, Zoom.
Oh, the the Zoom that he just did for you, Marty?
Yeah. I mean, so that it does fall under our category.
Wouldn't you require, though?
I think we're good without the sidewalk, so what were the other things that the
Well, there's
Topographical report?
On the very first page, there's the topographic survey showing existing and proposed site and building elevations at contour intervals.
Yeah, so I don't think there's much more than with two or three feet difference in the whole property there, so I I don't know it, the expense that it would cost, it's just, we're not getting anything out of it.
Right.
Yeah, to just to just put up the building, I don't see the need for they'll they'll do some minor grading as they need to.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not like it's tying into anything or anything that's that's that crucial.
Make a motion, somebody make a motion to waive the top.
We we approved that waiver.
I second.
Okay, motion has been made by Tom, seconded by Marty to approve the waiver request on the topographic survey, any discussion?
Yes, could, can we add in the also approving the waivers from the Public Works Director and Deputy into that same motion?
You can, if you choose to, if you all agree to waive those others, yes, you can.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to include that as well.
And you'll second it still, Marty?
Yes.
Motion has, the the motion was amended to include the the waiver request from the Public Works Department and the Arundel Contract Deputy, and it was seconded by Marty. Any other discussion? Hearing none on on that particular motion, Paul?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
It is unanimous. The next item that is being requested to be waived is the information block on the new plan.
Yeah, I think we have, we have to sign it, so we need to have that really can just be a rectangle with some lines in it.
Yep, just similar to what was on the original plan, we need to have a block that we can sign.
Yeah, sorry, I I mean, I guess I checked to waive it, but there is an existing block, so you you all signed it when I provided a Mylar in two thousand eighteen, so the only difference is this one is no longer calling it a future arena and calling it out as the proposed arena.
Okay, and then
It doesn't.
The other one is the the
Can I ask a question as far as that goes, where it, we did, I I remember we did approve of that future arena plan, and now it's it's coming to to be built.
Well, we we knew that he was going to build it, but at that point, he didn't know when, so we so we didn't actually approve it. We approved the concept that eventually it would come along.
Okay.
So I if I'm just being totally honest, like, I was, I I had approached Tad about a year ago to get the ball rolling on this, and that was news to me, I guess I was misinformed, and I had thought, I had thought that that was part of, you know, that future arena was part of what was informed, and that's when he told me about the two year timeframe. So unless it was built within the two years. Um, so unless it was built within the two years that that conditional use permit was approved, um, I would have to again, submit an application for an amendment and go through the planning board, so.
Is, is there any way we can, I don't know what the word is, uh, fast lane this, because
There's only two other, there's only two other items that we need. One is the letter from the fire chief and one is the, uh, the labels to notify the others. We can schedule the public hearing for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can have the, I can have the notice of decision drafted for you by that, for that meeting.
So we'll, you know, as, as long as you get those two items, I get the, get this stuff out to Ann uh, as quickly as possible in terms of the labels.
Yep.
And the, the chief, he should be able to write you that letter in no time and get it over to, to
So I just have one more question. Again, um, the, the waiver, the request for a waiver on the labels was approved in 2018. Even though I had kind of informally informed all the neighbors what was going on. So I've never submitted labels, like do they, do they, do I need to go to Staples and like have them literally printed, or can I just write them out handwritten?
They give me handwritten.
Okay. Touch, touch base with Ann in the morning.
Thank you.
That would be the easiest, Tom, because she's the one who's handling it now.
All right, great, thanks.
Other than that, we're going to need
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Marty.
If Paul or Susan, who had not seen it before, wants to see something beautiful, it would behoove them to take a look if you want.
You too, Marty, anytime.
Thank you.
So we
Wanna build a barn like that?
We need, we need one other motion, and that is denying the waiver request for the labels and the letter from the fire chief.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, motion by Jamie, seconded by Paul to deny the waiver request for the, the letter from the Arundel Fire Chief and the request for, uh, the labels. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Marty?
Yeah.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. So the, the next thing that we need to do is schedule a public hearing.
Um, make a motion, we schedule for the next planning board meeting.
August 3rd.
On the 3rd of August?
3rd of August.
Okay.
Do, um, Rich, in your experience, will that be sufficient for the fire chief to weigh in? I mean, ultimately, what I want to make sure is if we bring Tom in for the public hearing, we're ready to, um, to move on the, on his project.
We should be able to get that letter from the fire chief.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, I mean, it seems obvious, like that seems like something that, um, we, we should have had. The only reason I requested a waiver is I'm, I'm, they're quite aware, we live here. They actually, after we had got the 2018 approval, um, the town of Arundel and a lot of the other neighboring, um, fire stations actually did a training here where they went, or, because we just kind of had a perfect property for them to do so. Uh, and we talked pretty extensively about our future plans to build that arena. Um, he would really love us to put a fire pond here someday, but I don't know that we can sacrifice a, a pasture for a fire pond, but I'm, I'd be happy to reach out to him.
Yeah, reach out, reach out to him and let him know you're putting the building up and that we need a letter from him.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, to the chair.
I doubt very much that he's going to ask you to sprinkle it or do any, anything along those lines. But we need something that says that he's aware of, he's letting it go.
Yep.
Yeah, Marty.
Was that the same fire chief?
No.
Back then, so that's why, so you know it's a different chief. That's why try to get that documented.
Will do.
Okay, so we have a motion to have a public hearing on August 3rd. Motion was made by Tom and seconded by Jamie.
Yeah, I think it was vice versa. Jim, Jamie.
Jamie made it and you seconded it. Okay, I got it confused. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, is it gonna be Zoom?
No.
Are, is Zoom going into effect in the beginning of September?
Beginning of August.
Discussable.
No. The governor's order doesn't give us that leeway at this point in time.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so in-person meeting on August 3rd?
In-person meeting on August 3rd, unless you're going to be out of town for some reason.
Okay, to the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Can it still be Zoom? If public wants to come and see it, Zoom to the public.
No.
Can, can, let's, let's discuss this at the end.
Discuss it after we get done with this.
Okay.
Okay. So all those in favor? Paul?
Aye.
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll, we will have a public hearing. And if things go well, we should be able to give you, your notice of decision that night and have it all signed and ready to go.
Awesome.
I actually think, I actually think, Tom, that I've developed a draft already that I sent to Ann, so I'll need to fix it a little bit because of the waivers, but
Okay, my only question is, um, besides just, uh, getting the labels to Ann, which I can do tomorrow, uh, a letter from the fire chief, I'll contact them and get it. I'm sure within the next two weeks, I'm not gonna bug them about it, but as soon as I can get it, I, I certainly will. I remember last time, you know, it was kind of like, oh, get these, these items and we'll be able to give you approval that night. That night, I think the motion was approved, but I still had to then provide a Mylar print that could be signed. Should I just have that prepared ahead of time?
Yes, I agree with Rich.
Especially where we're meeting in person.
Right, so if it is in person, I can bring that, even though it's, you know, it's literally not much change besides the word "future" is now proposed. Um, but I can bring that to the meeting so it can be signed right away.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Uh, Rick?
Yeah.
Rich?
Yeah, Marty.
Does he have also, he has to leave a spot for that condition of the fire chief. How how do we have that Mylar?
That can just be a, a paper document.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be part of the
Okay, I'm just thinking out loud, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be part of the notice of decision.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom?
Aye.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought
Thank you for, for your time.
All right.
And we'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Yes, thank you, guys. I'm privileged.
We are meeting at the, we are meeting at the town hall.
All right. Is that the first meeting you have had?
It will be the first planned meeting at the town hall, yes.
Wow, what a privilege.
Yeah.
All right. Well, it's August 3rd.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next item of discussion is the, uh, proposed amendment to Land Use Ordinance 9312, Cluster Housing Planned Unit Development. You've got that sent out to you uh, at some point within the last couple of days, I believe. And we're, we're picking up where we left off, which was on page four. There was in addition to the common septic system, a certified system shall be designed, approved, and installed by a professional designer and certifying that it will work under the soil conditions present.
Rich?
Yes.
You know what day that was? Because there was a lot of different things Ann had sent out.
This one came out, it's dated
This one is called version 2.1, dated June 1st. And what's highlighted were the
The email, Marty, was yesterday.
That's not the one that I have up. Let me go find it. I have the one dated 5/18.
The email, Marty, that I looked at was yes, from yesterday, from Ann. Version 2.1.
June 1st.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Hey, I'm looking.
Yep, okay, that's the one I got.
And actually
Excuse me one second, guys, I'll be right back.
And actually, Rich, that's gonna, the first change, so everything that's highlighted in that version were the changes that I had discussed with the board at the last meeting that we workshopped it. Some of you were not there. And that actually starts, um, Rich, on page three under K, very poorly drained soils.
I can't start it on page three. I don't have it.
Really?
Yeah, I don't have it.
Hmm. But you have page four?
No, I don't, I, I don't have that in the, the June 1st document.
Well, I thought I gave you a copy of it when you were in Monday.
Yeah, I do, I don't have it on my computer. I thought Ann had sent it out.
That's what I'm looking at, Rich.
Hang on, this went out. I've got one here that went out on Monday. I was looking for something that, it went out yesterday. It's there. You know, I'm thinking today's Wednesday and I'm looking for something that was dated on Tuesday.
Yeah, this was dated Monday at 11:08 a.m.
Yep. So we are on page three
Three.
Six, under K, very poorly drained soils.
Correct.
Somewhat poorly drained soils shall also be prohibited for septic system locations unless a certified system can be designed, approved, and installed by a professional designer and certifying that it will work under these soil conditions.
Thanks, Freddie.
Right.
Yeah, I, I like that, but do, but defines as somewhat
Poorly drained That is the table that is
Yeah, the Soil Conservation Service.
Okay.
Page two, page two of that document has that, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Brayton, Buxton, and Noburg.
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you.
And you'd be striking, don't forget, Rich, would be striking except may be used for septic system locations only if pre-treatment is designed, installed. Which is the current language.
Right, we're taking that language out completely and saying that if it's somewhat poorly drained, un, unless it is a certified system designed and approved and installed by a professional designer certifying that it will work, then they're out of luck. I know where they can find somebody that will, that will tell you whether or not it'll do that work.
You're really gonna do this?
Well, if, if they need somebody to tell them if it'll work, I know somebody that they can hire that will tell them that.
Okay. Guys, I, I hope you're all sitting down. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, I'm not.
You better.
And we could, could contact, we could send them over to Tad and have them, have him take a look at their plan. Okay, so how do you all feel about that section?
Well, hold on, Rex, you opened that, you opened that door pretty hard. Is he now consulting in that line of work in town?
He's not doing anything right now, but if we asked him, he probably would.
Apparently, he's certified, Jamie.
Yeah, he's a certified land engineer, is it? Or soil scientist or something? But no, he's not. Right now, he's not doing anything. I just thought I, I know somebody that's qualified. So looking at section K, how do you all feel about it?
Yay.
Okay, wanna make that a motion, Marty?
Yeah, I accept it.
Okay. Is there a second to Marty's motion?
A second.
Okay, motion by Marty, seconded by Paul to adopt the language in section K. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Moving on down to section O. And the line that was added is a certified system shall be designed, approved, and installed by a professional designer and certifying that it will work under these soil systems, uh, soil conditions, and this is for a common septic system. So if
I like that, and that was Paul's suggestion, if I remember.
Yep.
And I think it's a good one. I move that we adopt that.
Motion was made by Susan, Susan Ruff, and seconded by Marty Kane to adopt the change to section O. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, and doesn't any septic system have to be designed by, by somebody who's professional to put it in?
It does say that.
It, no, I mean, in general.
I believe in general, you're correct, but in this case, they're having to certify that it will work under the soil conditions on that lot, which is not something that was there before.
Okay, thank you.
But ultimately, Marty, you're right. I mean, if any design is being certified by somebody, it's based on the, the soil conditions that are out there.
But it, wouldn't it be different, Jamie, if it was for a single residence as opposed to a collective, a septic system? Also, when they
I think they'd still have to do a test pit and assess the soils.
You still, you'd still have to, they, they would have to fill out a, what we call an HHE 200 form. Um, and that gets submitted to the state as well as to the local plumbing inspector and has to be reviewed and approved, and that's required for anybody designing that to stamp that.
Yeah.
So is this overkill, then?
Well, you know
Redundant?
I, I wouldn't say it's overkill. I think it's certainly just making the statement that you need to do it.
I, well, I, I gotta point this out, and, and maybe, maybe I'm the confused person. O and Q are identical, except for that last statement.
But I thought we bought, we brought those two sections in line with one another.
Well, no, I think Q was supposed to be taken out.
Yeah.
It was. I've got my old notes and they were supposed to be taken out.
Okay.
Q completely deleted?
It's identical to O.
Okay, so I will delete Q altogether.
Yes.
Then renumber it.
Right, of course.
The reason I say that is because that has happened before and it wasn't renumbered. And we got more confused along the way in the past.
Okay, so we
Ann, Ann keeps me straight these days, Marty.
Excuse me?
Ann keeps me straight.
Okay, we didn't have Ann doing it then.
No, I'm doing it, but she's checking everything, so.
I realize that, but we didn't have Ann.
Right.
And, and fortunately, DJ, you don't need to, uh, stress about what the last part of the alphabet is. You know?
Yeah.
Going back to, to Marty's, um, point about uh, having a professional designer, um, where is that stated? I don't see it anywhere in this. Would that be under building permit type thing?
That's on, that's on the HHE 200 form that they have to fill out and submit to both the state and the LPI.
Okay, so it's, it's clear, clarified there.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
So the next one is
So, uh, when we were working on this at that meeting, the workshop, whatever one it was, I had notes that said on O, we were gonna put words similar to what we had in K that we just voted on.
Yep.
And that, uh, N and P were duplicates as well as O and Q, so they were gonna get rid of at least one of each of them.
Yep.
Water supply is listed in O and it's listed, I mean, in N and P, and those are Water supply is listed in O and it's listed, I mean, in N and P, and those are duplicates.
Okay, so yeah, you're right.
I can, I will get rid of P.
Get rid of P and Q.
P and Q. Before we go forward, um, my, who, who made the, uh, the most, there's a motion on the table, isn't there?
Su- Susan made the motion. And Marty seconded. No, we haven't yet. So let's, the motion has been made and seconded to adopt O with the changes that, that are highlighted.
And remove Q?
No, that's a completely. We did, we dealt with that back at the last meeting, they just haven't come out.
Okay.
Yeah, my, that's, that was mine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Paul?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Marty?
Yeah.
It is unanimous.
So we're on to R?
We're on to R.
R.
So I have a question about R. So it says seventy-five to ninety percent. So how do we deter, is, is there a need to determine buffers that need, that can be seventy-five percent as opposed to ninety percent? Or is it just a subjective, it has to be someplace in that range in order for it to be acceptable, seventy-five to ninety?
Has to be someplace in that range.
Okay. So there's no judgment call that seventy-five isn't enough and ninety percent is too much? Or whatever, it's just in that range, seventy-five to ninety percent. Okay, I like that, that's fine.
Yeah, cuz it's gonna be really hard, you know, you have to, this has to be seventy-eight percent buffered. Not seventy-seven, not seventy-nine, seventy-eight, be really difficult to make them stick to that number.
And so someone doesn't ask that same question about the ordinance that I just did? Should we say that it must be in the range of seventy-five to ninety percent?
Sure, I, I mean, I can add, can achieve a range of seventy-five.
To ninety percent, so people know it has to be someplace in that window.
Yeah.
Yep, I will add that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along here.
And the, in the R one, DB one, and other urbanized sections, the board shall require a well-designed landscape screen and entrance consisting of trees, shrubs, fencing, and/or exposed ledge that enhance the visual appearance of the project. All proposed vegetation shall be native to this region of the state.
Okay, so I have another question about that, because when we did the site walk with Sean Dousten.
Yeah.
The contractor, so the, some of the abutters were asking me about buffer. And Sean was kind enough to say that he was going to buffer, uh, any, uh, you know, uh, areas that had been denuded or that, um, you know, were, were needed. And so the people, some of the abutters asked me, what does that mean? And I told them that you should, being specific is their friend, I think I expressed that to you, Rich. And that, you know, one man's buffer, and sort of like one man's ceiling is another man's floor. And so, should we put something in about, given what happened to us at Oak Ridge? Um, about the size of the buffer that is replacing that which has been removed or changed? Or does it have to, you know, meet a certain criteria? Or can you put a, a two-foot tree in where you've taken out a forty-foot tree? Or you've taken out an entire hedge and you put a hedge in that's only three feet tall? And it's gonna take forty years for it to grow and we'll all be in the ground fertilizing the area. So, that's my question. Because people got stunk at Oak, Oak Ridge apparently with promises of replacing the buffer and it being sufficient and it wasn't as sufficient as it should have been.
It, it won't be sufficient for about twenty-five years until those trees grow up.
Right, so how do you deal with that, DJ? That it's, you know.
Well, I mean, one of the, it depends on how far you wanna go. I mean, one of the standards that everyone has always used in the past is, you know, a minimum height of six feet. Um, but, you know, what does six feet really get you? You know, and is it gonna buffer something that may be buffered now if you're, if you're in a butter and, and you're on the second story of your house? Um, I mean, six foot, a six-foot high buffer isn't gonna really do it, so I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure where you take it, and, and I, and I get what you're talking about, it's, um, it's a tough issue, um. I wouldn't, I mean, I I probably would at least start for discussion purposes at a minimum height of six feet, um, for us tonight. But, um, it, it really depends, I think it's a project by project, issue by issue situation. You know, what, what are you trying to buffer or block the visual access to? Um, and.
So can we make that discretionary as we have some other things, uh, that buffer, uh, doesn't mean one blanket thing and that depending upon the situation? We.
Of course, of course, the planning board, the planning board has the discretion to condition an applicant on just about anything. And if it means you don't feel comfortable that a six-foot high, you know, buffer at planting is gonna suffice and you want twelve-foot trees buffered there, then you can condition him on that, uh, him or her on that. Um, and then they're either gonna have to live with it or they're not gonna do the project.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Okay. One way we can resolve that at ground level, first floor, six feet high so that it will eliminate lights, I mean, like car lights. Subject to change on grade and elevation like we had over at Champagne cuz we had elevation which was different. If you put that in that way, so we aren't gonna be playing like what we had to play with, with Bentley's and somebody saying buffer from the second floor. You're changing, you're adding to all the possible conditions along the way so that it's not really starting to play a super guessing game.
I, and you know, Marty, I was thinking of Champagnes and the fact that we told, we told them that the guys across the street stand, if you're standing in the first floor window, you should not be able to see that parking lot. And that's, that's exactly what we should be looking at here.
Okay, I like that language, Marty. So is the language in the permit for champagne energy and can we look at that as our?
No, we didn't necessarily put it in the language on that, that was the condition because the condition was of, uh, grade and elevation, I mean, uh, which we have never really dealt with except at one time when we were playing with Bentley's and somebody was trying to say, hide me from the second story.
But, but at Champagnes, we did require him to put in a six-foot burn. And then put the trees up on top of that.
Correct, but that was because of grade and elevation.
Yeah. Nope, you're right, and I, I think it, we need to take that into consideration. Uh, I'm not sure if that's something that you can codify in the ordinance, but it's something that we definitely need to take into consideration when an applicant comes before us and they're going to be faced with an issue of creating a buffer.
So I mean, if you stipulate it already, that's taking some of the guessing game out for now and the future.
So you could do something like, um, I'm just writing it out now. But you could do something, you could add something like, um, the, the buffer shall be a minimum of six feet of height at grade floor, at ground floor elevation. However, um, grade, grade and elevations may require additional buffering on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that works.
That gives you the ability to work with whatever situation you have.
Well, we did that down on, cuz this section is for the DB one, if you read in the, in the R three, R four, we did that. You know, where the applicant can conclusively demonstrate that the topography, existing vegetation, fencing, landscaping, combination thereof achieves that seventy-five to ninety fo- percent buffer. So that's, that's been addressed there, but up in the, in the R one and the DB one and urbanized sections.
Right.
It's not, and we may very well just wanna, and I don't know, do you wanna make that the standard in the, in the business areas?
No, because you don't wanna block the visibility on the front property line.
Yep.
I mean, uh, we played the game of possibly, uh, side, side possibly, but I mean, uh, where we had to play with Champion Auto and everything else. But I mean, you don't wanna have Route one and then you gotta try to see over the, the, uh, the trees to see where you're going. And then on top of that, you got your sign ordinance, which is, was a disaster. And you, you're gonna have to have a bigger sign just to try to see the sign to see where you're going.
So.
So don't give me.
I could add, I could add some additional language that indicate that, that pertains to the side and rear lot lines.
I, I think the, the only time in, in the R one or DB one, I should, I should have said it, we need to have it is, is up against residential properties when, when they abut residents. Otherwise. Otherwise, I agree with Marty, um, from one business to the other, do they, do we need to have too much buffering?
None, I don't, I would agree, not in the business district.
What about in the business district, as Tom said, when it's abutting a residential property?
Th- then yes, you ha- you have to block it for the, for the purposes of the residential.
So I can craft some language that indicates that, that the side and rear property line shall have that buffering when abutting residential properties.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and then add the six-foot high, the grade elevation changes. I can craft something together to, to add under the first paragraph of the landscape screening buffer section, which is the DB, the R one and DB one.
DB two.
Well, other urbanized sections of the town, so you'd be looking at the Gateway District, the Townhouse Corner District.
So you want this to be a standalone section?
I don't think we should put this all in a big cluster, but the other factor is too, don't forget, you said residential. But also in DB one and DB two, you may have somebody living there as for security purposes, but is that considered residential or not?
No, cuz you remember we said that that was ancillary to the, to the primary usage of the, of the property, so you you cannot put a residential building on that land unless you've got a business already running there.
Well, you know what I'm going at.
Yeah.
Let me try to craft something and throw it in here as a standalone section as it relates to commercial zones. And then if you wanna dump it after it's written, doesn't bother me. Well, let me try to, let me try to draft something for you to take a look at.
But right now, we're still just trying to address the cluster housing. And cluster housing is not in the business. So we wanna make sure we're covering the cluster development.
That's a good point, Marty.
But they, they.
Really doesn't apply to this.
They could stick it in the DB two. They could put like a residential hu- housing section in the DB two.
Yeah, don't forget, you see, you made it so it's only two hundred and fifty feet off Route one. Not me.
So can I, can I propose some words?
Yes, Paul.
I, I, it sounds like we're trying to get too finite in this and we're gonna tie ourselves up, but just, what about if right after it's says all proposed vegetation shall be native to the region of the state and take into consideration grade and elevation topography of the area? Bang, and then when they come in, eh, we can look at the area when we do sidewalks and figure out what they need and make it clear to them at that point on a case-by-case basis.
Yep.
So we're not tying our hands to a six-foot tree or, or, uh, you know, a forty-foot mound or something.
I like that cuz it's vaguely specific enough, you know what I mean?
Paul, would you leave the percentages in there?
On the bottom?
Yeah.
Right, but the percentage is applied to the R three and R four.
R three and R four.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Alright, great.
Paul, can you read that back again just so I can?
I can, I can email it to you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that'd be great.
Basically, what I'm, what I'm, I'm just proposing something simple and believe me, it's a, I'm you can cut it up whatever way you want, I have no problem with that. But what I'm saying is after the, you know, the native to this region of the state and take into consideration grade elevation, uh, grade and elevation topography of the area. So it's gonna make you look at it and say, hey, this is where I gotta put a twelve-foot tree or a six-foot tree or, or a headlights on hitting the guy's window when he pulls around the corner, which is what we're really trying to do, right?
Yep.
Okay, I can do that.
And that'll give us enough leeway, I think, on a case-by-case basis, we can go look at things like you ran into with, you know, with, uh, champagne and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, so how do you feel about the second portion in the R three, R four district down at the bottom? The applicant may request a waiver of the buffer from the planning board to no less than thirty feet in width around the exterior perimeter, provided they submit renderings to show how they will meet the visu- visual blockage standard of seventy-five to ninety percent. Personally, I think it should stay at fifty feet.
This is all in the R three, R four?
Yes.
I agree.
I think, I think it needs to stay at the fifty percent.
Fifty feet.
Uh, fifty feet, yes, fifty percent, they'd really have a.
Twenty acres.
Jamie, you agree with the fifty feet or you agree with the wording?
I agree with the concept of, of fifty-foot buffer.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
You know, fifty feet of landscaping there, you know.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be the hardcore seventy-five, ninety percent with its.
Right.
If it's, um, you know, natural.
Yeah.
But, but strike the fifty and go back, uh, thirty and go back to fifty?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, just leave it.
No, I, you're, 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 you're doing it on both sides, so you turn on cutting a hundred feet off automatically on your envelope.
So basically, you don't need that wording at all because this is suggesting that they could get a waiver from the fifty feet down, and if you don't wanna do that, then we don't need any of that language.
That's true, and this is talking about the exterior of the development, not between the houses inside. Just the exterior of the development, so if we were to take a look at, well, let's, let's say Walter Woods. Walter Woods would have had to have a fifty-foot buffer all the way around that piece of property.
Now, there is a fifty-foot, if you, you turn on, if it's your front line, that, that's, uh, the setting back of, uh, the setback for a house, because most houses are set back fifty feet.
That's what we did to a Rundle's keep though.
This is, keep in mind, this is a clustered development, so they, they can rearrange it. They don't need the full three acres in the R, uh, four.
Yeah, there, this ordinance is essentially what we did to a Rundle's keep, when we said it has to have a fifty-foot buffer between the road and, and the, the property line for the house, and that fifty-foot buffer is inviolate, it is going to be there.
And it becomes part of the open space that's set aside anyways.
Yeah.
But we, but we also did that because we changed the whole arrangement of the development from where it originally started. And because we had, uh, dual drive. And because we had, uh, dual driveways and other attributes that we had changed from the original plan that the fifty foot buffer, uh, I believe was needed and works and that we gave the act. So. But I agree with Lee Jay that we could probably just take it out. Sometimes less is more.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll, you'll make the adjustments in the, in the first part of that, and then we'll, we should be good to go.
Yes.
And from there, that was the last of the yellowed highlighted changes that we had to look at.
Well, isn't there one about seven acres for a noncluster?
Oh, yes, that's, oh yeah, you're right. I, it's so small, I didn't even see it.
I have a comment about that. So in the rural conservation district, the minimum lot size is three acres. So why would we say that cluster development is discretionary if the lots are greater than three acres? Or three acres or greater?
Doesn't that just negate the whole concept of cluster?
It, it does in the, it does if you're in the RC district and you've got enough land.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I personally think that that works in the rural conservation district. I don't think the rural conservation district should be bound by cluster housing. That's my, that's why it's rural conservation.
So what, what's, I, I think, at first, when, when I first heard this, I, I was opposed to it, but then the way I understand it, I, I think is, is pretty good. That with, we, if we had sixty acres out there, they could divide and put twenty, twenty properties in there. But if someone didn't really want to do that, but they still wanted to divide it up, we, we allow them to have larger size, not be less than, than an acre or whatever, like we're doing most, in most cluster developments, we're all about an acre. They might want to be able to retain larger properties.
But why make it seven acres? Why not make it three acres or greater, which is the minimum lot size in rural conservation?
I think with, with three acres, it's just saying, just divide it up however you want.
Do anything.
Don't do it, because that's, that, it already is three acres.
But we're talking about rural conservation. We're not talking about the R one.
I, I know, but, but his, his, the reason, one of the benefits of cluster development is to retain the, the rural environment. And if we just have every, every two or three acres divided up with the house, there's no, there's no wildlife trails, there's no, um.
The intent of this, the, the intent of that is to have large estate-like lots.
Yeah.
In the, in that zone.
In that zone.
If you're going to make, you know, if you're going to do a subdivision and have, you know, that large of a lot, ultimately, there's gonna be, I think the presumption is that there's gonna be a lot of that open space naturally preserved or, or unimpacted by the, the development. And you could, you know, you would have that, uh, essentially, you'd, you'd allow somebody to have a large, you know, estate-type lot while not imposing the, the cluster restrictions on the, the development.
Um, that's possible. I think seven acres is too large. I, and maybe three is too small, but that is the minimum in the rural, in the R four. And what is it in the R three? Is it also three acres? So you could make it four acres or greater, but a four acre lot or a five acre lot is a decent bit of land. And, you know, for instance, next door, Bob has five, twenty-five acres. Let's just not count what's wet and what's not. So he could have five lots there without having to cluster it, and they could all be five acres. But I mean, Chip, that whole lot, that four hundred and sixty acres behind me is in the R four district. Is that correct? And we would want him to maintain a certain level of, um, woodlands and wooded areas, but I think seven acres is too great. And maybe three is too small, but five, and I know, you know, two, forget two, but maybe five is a happy medium.
So how do we encourage preservation of open space?
Well, five acres is still a decent amount of land. It's not.
But five acres, though, it isn't necessarily gonna be preserved. It, it could be, have a fence all the way around it.
It could, but you could fence seven acres too.
Good point.
I, I, I think one of the things, I wasn't part of this discussion originally, but I think listening to, to you folks on this particular issue, one of the questions I would have is in preserving the open space, what is the intent of it? Is the intent that it be kept in private ownership or that it be somehow available to the public? And the reason I ask that is because mandatory clustering, you know, gives you the ability to put all these house slots or these houses in the corner of a lot, for example, and have the rest of the land open and available to everyone in that development. Whereas a seven acre lot, for example, is under one person's ownership, and yes, they could fence it, or they could post it, or they could do whatever. So it's only available to that lot owner. So I, I think one of the things to think about is what is the intent of preservation? Is it just preservation of open land or is it preservation of open land available to, you know, more than one person?
Well, strictly, um, strictly from an open space point of view, I would have to agree with Susan that we would probably want to go down to five acres. And the reason I say five acres is that if I have a seven acre lot and I'm in the, the R four, I can split that lot and put two houses in there. And there's nothing the town could do about it. Because it's not clustered. If it were clustered, then there would be some teeth in, in the document that created it. But if, if it's an individually owned lot of seven acres, five years from now, I could cut that in half and I can give part of it to my daughter, and I've automatically gone through and created more of a nightmare than we had originally intended. So I, so I would, I would say five, because now you can't create two separate lots out of five. But other than that.
I like that idea. That's, um, because the only, their cluster housing is available in other districts, but the two districts that are meant to be kept and, um, somewhat rural without clusters and groupings of houses in between open space is the R three and the R four. And maybe I think that district should be kept more in individual hands than it should be clustered. That's my personal opinion. I have over seven acres. I'm in the R four. And I would want to see five acres lots near me as opposed to a bunch of houses, like thirty houses and chips, uh, all clustered together and open space like conservation land around it. I would, that's my preference in the R three and the R four.
I'm sorry, but one of the, what we try to encourage with cluster is to still have some type of rural character in that, that neighborhood. So they would be set back, unlike on Log Cabin Road with the, uh, whatever that Scout's Way, they're right there. And I think that was, that to me, didn't follow the intent. Think we, we would like to have some clear buffer out front, so you don't even see those houses. And then they can be clustered together and then, then it could be land out back if possible.
Yeah, but Tom, Scout's Way is a poor example, because he was supposed to put the buffer in there.
Well, we, we let him not put it in. It was, I think, we, we dropped the ball. But, um, if, just because they're, they're closer together, doesn't mean they're gonna be right in your face. That's, that's actually not what, what cluster development should be up. It's actually just the opposite, that you don't even know they're there because they've been clustered and tucked aside. And, and all the open space is available to both the public, could be through, deeded through some land trust. It's also for, for wildlife habitat and, and clean water, things like that.
I, okay, I mean, I've expressed my opinion. I don't think it, I think there's enough area in the town of Arundel for cluster housing. I don't think the more rural, uh, districts necessarily have to be under the same, uh, requirements. And I think five acres is a good number, because you can't subdivide that.
I, I think it should be a mandatory cluster unless you can, you can make the development using five lots. Uh, or five acres lots, five acre lots, uh. Because I do want to encourage people to be able to have more land if, if they, i- if they so choose to have it.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
On that, if we leave it at five acres and then put a stipulation in there, the lot cannot be subdivided.
Well, it can't be anyway.
Just, if you just say it, it's not, it's said before, anybody thinks of it in the future.
Yeah, because it, it, it would have to, i- it's gonna be in the HOA agreement.
It'd become deeded, it's part of the approved subdivision.
I mean, it would, it would have to go through for, to split a lot that's already in a subdivision. You'd have to amend the subdivision. You know, it would, it would be much more than we get into in a typical, you know, six acre lot that somebody has, that they split it and give it to their family member.
I'm just saying, if we just put it there, I mean, uh, because it may not be a subdivision at first, it may be just first, one house or two houses, but it's not a, a privately owned, so it wouldn't be a subdivision. I mean, if you turn it on, put it in there that way, if it's not in a subdivision, then it's, it's specified.
So, so I think to Susan's point, the, the advantage of dropping it to five acres is that it would, you're, you're, you know, if you, if you think of a subdivision and somebody's got, you know, thirty acres and they're allowed to put in, you know, say, ten houses. If they have to go to a larger lot size, you know, or if they were to be required to go to a seven acre lot size versus a five, it would end up being more road, more disruption to the overall parcel than if you were to allow to go to a five acre lot size and it would, they would be able to, to put those same number of lots in, in a, in a more condensed area. And by default, you would, you would conserve that, that extra area of open space. You know, it may not be dedicated, deeded open space to a third party, but it would be, you know, unless somebody then went in and decided to clear it all for whatever reason. You know, which I don't think is, is horribly likely. It would, it would be, you know, de facto open space. You know, a shared woodland.
So to the chair?
Yes.
So if you listen to NPR, I don't know if any of you do, but they often have commercials that over ninety-five percent of the open space in the state of Maine is privately owned.
Yep.
And that you should use it respectfully and with care. And I know, for instance, in, behind us on Chip's huge piece of land, people ride their horses in there and they're walking and whatever. Apparently, that takes place in Maine all over the state. So I thought that was a really interesting statistic. And to Jamie's point, it would also mean less hard state uh, at five acres. And, uh, so I think that that's a big compromise personally. So I would go for that.
Well, then I would say make a motion to change that seven to five.
I, I move that we change that number to five acres in section, is that still R? No.
No. Well, right now it is, but it's in, um,
Section four.
Section four of which will be P.
Right.
So I move that we change section four in, uh, or subset four in section B to five acres as opposed to seven.
Would, would that be the only exemption to, to the subdivision requirements, just in the acreage?
Oh, there's five different paragraphs, yeah.
Well, the other is, is consistent with what was already there. So the highlighted portion, uh, that's underlined is the change.
I'll second it.
Okay, mo- motion was made by Susan Roth and seconded by Marty to change it to a all proposed lot shall be a minimum of five acres in area. Any questions?
Yeah.
Question?
So we're just talking about the acres, not the, there was other clauses there, like, I had a question about number five.
That, that is correct. It's just the acreage.
Okay.
Oh, that doesn't give Marty what he wanted. You're not gonna subdivide the acreage.
Right.
Okay, watch, shall never be subdivided.
Right, or not subdivisible.
Right, and, uh, shall, the lot shall never be subdivided and shall be encumbered by conveyance of development rights to the town or a suitable land conservation organization such as ACT or the Forest Farm Program.
So that, so since we have a discussion on that, my question is, what, what is shall be encumbered by conveyance with, that mean? What's encumbered?
It's the development rights. It means that either the town or a conservation organization own the rights to develop the land. Nobody else does. Similar to what we did, again, what we did at Arundel's Keep was take that fifty foot uh, right of way coming off the, the property, and they put a conservation easement on giving that land to Arundel Conservation, so that.
That was, that was the, the open space was, was conveyed. But, uh, this is saying all lots, so shall never be survived. I, I'm seeing this meaning all lots shall be encumbered by conveyance of, of development rights.
See what you're saying, Tom, yeah. I see what you're saying.
So, yeah, so do I now.
So I think what encumbered means in this instance is that it's like a CCNR, okay? So in other words, it would pass, it passes with the land, not with the owner. So if a new owner buys the land or the house that's on the land, the restrictions of the original deed pass to the new owner. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that, but having your property rights, development rights conveyed to, um, the town.
I didn't get that it was conveyed to the town. I, I got that it couldn't be subdivided and it passed, the condition passes with the land, not with the owner. So in other words, it doesn't expire when the owner changes.
Okay.
That was my interpretation of it.
But it does say conveyance of development rights to the town or a suitable conservation organization, so they could very well end up at the town. Um.
So, and then the town can sell it as, on a quick claim deed.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm seeing. It, it, so they're really controlling the development rights. Is it the ownership as well?
Paul?
I think that too should say of, because what you're trying to say is they have to live to the development. I think that too should say of, because what you're trying to say is they have to live to the development rights of the town. Right, which we've already stated, which puts the restrictions on them. So you're saying that the lot can never be sh- subdivided and shall be encumbered bu- uh, by conveyance of development rights of the town.
The town doesn't have the development rights. Unless, unless we say in here, the town does not have those development rights anyway.
Then are those the right words? What we're trying to say is you can't split it and you can't do anything new with it just because you sell it to a new owner.
Right.
Right?
That was my interpretation.
So maybe you change the word to say that can't be subdivided and if sold, the original restrictions still apply.
Well, it should be, it should be a deed and restriction. I mean, and then it does pass with the land.
How did we, how did we do that with the Rundle's keep? Because I don't remember.
Because it was a buffer to the street as opposed to, I know we did it with the property that was in the back, but primarily the way it got started was because of the the needed buffer between the houses and the street and the double driveways.
And also it was, it was so wet landing into there.
And it was just the open space, not the private property that was conveyed.
Right.
So Mr. Planner, any ideas?
Yeah, um, actually, I was going to punt to Leah and I think maybe I ought to have a conversation with her to find out if we can even do that, because in some sense of the word, it's one thing to say all lots shall never be further subdivided, which means that your seven acres is your seven acres or whatever number you come to, but this idea of requiring encumbrance of development rights to the town or land conservation, I don't know if the town has the right in an ordinance to take someone's property like that. That's a taking.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's illegal. Um, so I'd like, you know, some time to maybe work with her and see if there's some language or some way that we can do something to address what you're trying to do.
Well, I don't think that.
You know, I, I, I tend to agree with Tom. I don't think I want to do that to the landowner. If we do it to the, to the buffers or to the, to the common area and, and there are conditions set on that, that you can't develop it or do anything. And, and you can turn it over to ACT or somebody else, but I'm not sure I want to be telling Marty's favorite character, Harvey homeowner, that they have to do that.
To the chair?
Yes.
Do we have to leave that in? Can't we just say that the five acre lot is not subdividable? And that condition passes to new owners? It, it's a part of the, it's a deed restriction? And leave it at that without the town, without ACT and without conservation? I mean.
Well, as long as it's in the ordinance and it said, and it were to say all lots shall never be further subdivided, period, you've accomplished what you're trying to do.
I think that's plenty.
That would be, that would be plenty.
Right.
Because I, I agree with Tom on this. I don't want to be telling the homeowner. You, you gave up all your development rights.
Yeah.
I agree. I, I think just make it simpler. Take out the other part. I don't want to, you know.
You, you run into the issue, well, I've got this five acre lot and I've lived there for ten years, but I want to develop it. I want to put a swimming pool in a cabana. And I can't. I don't have the right to anymore.
Yeah, if it can't, if they're subdivided, I think that does it.
Yeah, I agree. Shall never be further subdivided, period.
That I can do without talking to legal counsel.
Yeah.
The second part can, made me uncomfortable a little bit, but.
Okay, so the question then goes back to all proposed lots shall be a minimum of five acres? Is that what, did you make a motion on that, Susan?
I did.
And somebody seconded it. We just.
Yeah, me.
Okay, Marty seconded it. Is there any other discussion on the seven acres down to five? Okay, hearing none. Paul?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Susan? Jamie?
Aye.
Tom?
I, I'm opposed.
Okay, it is one, two, three, four, five in favor and one opposed.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, change the words in paragraph five to say that all lots shall never be further subdivided and strike the rest of the words.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded by, mo- made by Paul Green, seconded by Susan Roth to change item number five to all, all lots shall never be further subdivided, period. Everything following the period to be deleted. Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Jamie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Susan?
Oh.
Marty?
Yeah.
Paul?
Aye.
It is unanimous. That takes care of that.
So gentlemen, I have to leave. I have my grand niece with me. She's nine and she has to go to bed.
Okay.
Good idea.
Yes.
So.
Definitely a good idea.
Okay, I still leave you with a quorum, I believe.
Yes, you do.
Okay, thank you all. Good night.
Night.
Town planners report. You're up, Lee J.
Um, I really don't have a lot to report. I, I gave you a lot the last meeting. It's still fairly busy. Um, not a lot of new development discussions. There's a couple of things that may be on the horizon. Um, I think the next meeting we're looking at is going to be two development projects, um, coming forward to you folks. Um, besides the public hearing on the Equestrian facility. But, um, I think we're finally kind of settling into, to dealing with issues and, um, I'm going to be able to spend more hours in town hall, um, at least on Mondays. Um, if you want to come in and visit me. Don't feel like you have to. I got plenty to do, trust me. Um, I think Jim Nagel and I have a really good relationship at this point and a lot of good dialogue going on. And he and I are talking about many issues. Um, so no one is making any unilateral decisions coming out of, out of that department at this point. And, um, uh, that's about all I have.
September thirteenth, there is an MMA training for the planning board up in Portland.
Yes.
And I know Paul, you, you're planning on going, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm planning on going. Uh, I don't know if anybody else wants to go.
What was the topic?
Oh, it's just training for planning boards.
Basically like a planning board one-on-one refresher course on, on anything and everything to do with process and procedures.
It's, yeah, it's been a while since, since we had one and.
I'm gonna pass.
We kept, I kept trying to get, uh, Keith to get Leah to come down and give us one, but they didn't want to spend the money.
I'll pass.
Okay.
What night of the week is that?
I believe it's a Monday.
Yeah, I think it's during the day.
Oh.
Is it during the day?
Oh, that I don't know. My son.
That was, that was my impression when I first saw the email.
Okay. It, it is on the thirteenth. You can, if you.
That could be very incorrect.
If you're interested in going, check with Ann and let her know and she'll get you registered.
Great.
Other than that, there's a discussion regarding the format of board minutes. Uh, primarily, this is going to deal more with sitewalk than anything else, because we made the decision to reference the video for the minutes of the meeting itself. But there, there will be a question about the format for sitewalk and anything that is not, uh, recorded.
Yeah, you should ought to still have some basic minutes, um, for that. I, they don't need to be long and in-depth, but you know, general aspects of conversation that may have occurred with the applicant in the field. And if.
Who is there?
And right, yes. And if there's any, um, if you, if you do, for whatever reason, make any motions out there, although you really should not.
You do not.
Um, make sure that that's, that that's documented. And I'm, I'm on the MMA website and I'm looking for, um, the date or time of that program and I don't see anything on their website at this point. No, I don't see anything. They may have advertised it already, which I'm, I know they did, but I can't find anything that they've got out there yet.
Yeah, um, Ann's email appears that it's going to be a Zoom webinar. It's on July twentieth.
Yeah, that's the one that was today.
Yeah, that was from four to seven thirty.
Yeah, Susan. We'll, we'll look that up and make sure that, that you folks again get that information. I'll talk with Ann about that.
And there is a meeting on Monday. The selectmen are going to be meeting to discuss their remote participation policy. They've drafted up a couple of different items about what they want to have us have in there. Similar to what the governor has said. It seems to be a, an amalgamation of what the governor said, what, uh, Southern Maine Regional Planning has said and a little bit of what Keith has said. But essentially, because the governor has lifted the emergency declaration, we cannot meet in a Zoom format after July thirty-first. If, if we cannot, if for whatever reason you cannot make the meeting, you have to be either sick or out of town. Or there has to be some kind of a declared emergency such as the, the great blizzard of, uh, Marty, you, you, you remember this stuff better than I do, but if it's got to be some kind of a natural disaster that would prevent us from meeting face to face. Then we could do a Zoom meeting. The problem I'm having is that if we do a Zoom meeting, we have to post it so that members of the public can attend if they want to. And if, let, let's assume that for whatever reason, Tom is out of town. He went to Florida and he's going to participate in the meeting. We have to open that meeting up for members of the public to be able to meet. And it will be difficult if we don't know about it at the time.
So Tom, if you go to Florida, just let us know and we'll Zoom the meeting and if you don't show up, you don't show up.
I'll make a deal. If I go to Florida, it's for vacation and, and I probably won't be.
You're not going to show up for the meeting.
But say you will. Just tell us you're going to, and that way we can at least, you know, Zoom the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, Rich? How about, I, like I said, you know where I stand about the Zoom meetings?
Yeah.
Okay, how about if, if we have to go play hand in hand in the great town hall? Why can't we still have a Zoom to the public?
Because it's not required.
I know, but I'm saying is we've got more public public input or anything else over these months than we've had instead of sitting there in an empty hall.
Well, I will, I will ask, uh, that question of the selectmen. I don't know. I don't know if they're going to want to continue to pay to have Zoom and broadcast the meetings.
Well.
Not that it's costing them a lot of money, but.
But like I said, just even like our town planner, okay? For an example, he wouldn't have to, he doesn't have to travel all that far, okay? Or anything else. And the fact is, it's saving the town money.
Yeah, it is.
Absolutely.
I can't argue that, but that's why you, if, if you want an answer to that question, you have to show up on Monday night and ask the selectmen and say to them, yeah, and we can work up our own policy. But, and we, we probably should, but in the meantime, we're going to be faced with whatever the selectmen come up with next Monday night.
Yeah, but can't we work our own policy up and saying that we want to do it all by Zoom? That policy.
That, that policy violates the governor's order.
Well, and, and actually, it's not even the governor's order at this point. It's state law. It was, it was passed by the legislature. The language that I sent out is LD thirty-two, which was a legislative document. Um, and it's, it's the law, um, unfortunately. Because, yes, you're right, Marty. I mean, I'm the one person that has Zoomed every meeting in every darn town in York County since this thing started. And I like being at home when I can shut off the computer and that's the end of it, um, rather than traveling an hour to every town. Absolutely.
I mean, even for weather.
Yeah. Safety. Weather, weather might be enough of an excuse if, like, in the winter, if there is a, even if there's a report of a major snowstorm, but you want to continue to have the meeting, I think you might be able to Zoom that meeting, provided there's enough, um, forewarning for the public to be able to gain a link. But that's, even that's going to be a stretch, I think, under the law.
Yes, so they'll, it, it will create some problems, I'm sure. And we're going to have to work on them. And what, once we know what the selectman's situation is going to look like, we can then work on developing our own. That may require us to have a, a meeting, because we cannot work on it unless we advertise the meeting. You know, gotta, gotta let the public know and give them the opportunity to show up and comment on it.
What about?
I, I agree with you, Marty. I'd love to continue to meeting, meet on Zoom.
What about if the public demands? Zoom.
The law says differently.
Then they're going to have to go to the legislature in the second session and try to get the law changed.
There is a move afoot, by the way, to get that law changed.
So that. I wouldn't be surprised.
Continue to meet, uh, on Zoom. We'll have to see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be surprised that it does get changed, but in the short term, it is what it is.
Yeah, I don't think there was anything else that I need, I had to bring up.
How's Holy Donut coming?
Holy Donut will be coming before us shortly.
For what?
They've got their whole, we have to review the drive-through. Because the, bec- that section belongs to us. The, the processing in the donut facility itself is not part of our purview.
But I wouldn't, I don't, I, I would suggest staying away from discussion of that project since no one representing them is on the Zoom.
I just, I'm just wondering how it was coming.
I think you'll see it at the next meeting, correct? Yes.
Because I've seen they've been playing down there cleaning up some, but that's all I would just say, inquiring, not.
Yep, yep, no, no, no. I, I hear you. I just didn't want that conversation to go too far.
I'm just saying, from, from, from our, from the planning board's perspective, what we look at is the drive-through.
So I, I do have a question more on process, I guess. Uh, so I got a letter this week from, uh, I think it was Ann that sent it to me about the development that's going in that I'm going to butter.
Yes.
So does that present a conflict of interest when it comes ahead of us?
It does for you and it does for Susan Sinnet. You'll have to recuse yourself from discussions.
That's what I wanted to know.
If we're, we're going, we're going to be meeting face to face, so what you'll have to do is walk out and go sit in the audience.
But that doesn't preclude you, Paul, from speaking as in a butter.
Right, I just can't bolt on it, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know going ahead on this. Okay?
Yeah, and, and I, I recommend in, in, because you could theoretically. Yeah, and, and I, I recommend, and, and, because you could, theoretically, you could sit there in, in, in your chair and go, okay, I'm recusing myself and I'm not gonna take part in the vote. I, I would think it is a better image to get up and walk out and sit in the audience and carry on the discussion.
Yep, no, I'm fine with that, I, I want to do the right thing for the board, that's why I'm asking, okay?
Paul? Paul?
Yes, sir.
When you get up, explain why you're getting up, saying, well, because I'm in a butter. And, I mean, that way you're announcing it automatically.
Yeah.
Instead of wondering what, where and how.
Yep, right.
That's all.
Yep, no, I will do that. Okay.
Okay, is there anything anybody else has that they want to bring up?
I'll move we adjourn.
Motion was made to adjourn. We are done.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night. Talk to you guys later.